Good evening. I now call to order the January 22, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Protam James Bazagian, Councilmembers Albrecht, Shapiro, and Weintraub, as well as the city staff. We'd like to provide public— if you'd like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Speaker cards can be found at the back of the room. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk as well. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mark Levinson, would you kindly lead us?
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liable with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, may I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
We did meet in closed session beforehand. City Attorney, do you have a report on our closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. We did meet on one matter of potential litigation. No reportable action was taken. We will be reconvening in closed session after the open session ends for the second matter of potential litigation. That is all I have.
All right, thank you. So we'll move quickly then into council announcements. Can I start with Councilmember Albrecht?
We're here already.
We're there already. So a variety of announcements. I guess I want to say we're all thankful for being here under the circumstances. Sorry to hear what happened with Malibu. We sympathize with them very, very much and pray for those that have lost their homes and beyond to make a quick and healthy, happy recovery. To that point in this room—I'll say it just a little bit because I'm sure the mayor will get into it a little bit more—but this room was our emergency operations center and it served very well on a 24/7 basis. And I'm so proud of our staff and our city that provided that and information and communications. To that end, being a former homeowner president of Greater Mulwood, our homeowner association is trying—going forward with a Firewise Community Certification. And I think it would be very smart for other communities in the city to do that. There are seven already. Those seven are gated communities, so our community is not gated. We'll be the first voluntary homeowner association to try to achieve that certification, so we'd be happy to provide the connection points, the phone numbers for Firewise and Epic to get that done. I think it'll be very helpful and safe—making our community safer and maybe as a byproduct benefit when the time comes on insurance a little bit. Good news, we have a holiday celebration tomorrow for city, which is nice. We put it off during the holidays because it didn't want to interrupt with families, so it's going to be exciting and we'll report to the bowling alley who had the highest score. So those are my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Shapiro?
And the score will not be mine, I'm sure of that. I just want to echo Councilmember Albrecht's sentiments and all of ours that we have had the last few weeks and actually the last months of the year some terrible, terrible fires and tragedies for those in Altadena, in Palisades, everywhere where the fires have come through. It reminds us all as a city what we went through with the Woolsey fires years ago and much, much worse for so, so many—for those who lost their lives, lost pets, lost their homes and everything else. Our thoughts, our prayers obviously go out and we're going to see what we can do going forward as a city to help and individually. I know a lot of people have reached out to our city to do so. I do want to take a moment to thank our fire personnel, our sheriff personnel, our CHP, and all first responders who helped keep our city safe and everyone else safe and protect homes and property throughout the region and continue to do so with new fires even as of today. And I want to give a special thanks also to our city staff, as mentioned, who did a fantastic job 24/7 operating here in the EOC, protecting our city, our residents, even when the Kenneth fire was right at the doorsteps of a number of our residents and some of our parks here in the city. So thank you to them. And a big thank you to everybody here. We have a full crowd tonight. I know we want to get on to that and start 2025 on the right track, so thank you all for volunteering in your service.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you so much. I want to first start by thanking all of our first responders for the incredible work that was done since January 7th. We saw such devastation in the Palisades and Altadena and Malibu and some of Topanga. We were so lucky in Calabasas. At some points, you know, it felt like the fire was coming in at all angles and the work that our first responders did was really incredible. So I want to start by saying thank you and I know as a community, we're doing our best to support those that were impacted by these fires and also want to acknowledge our city staff. As was mentioned, our EOC was open 24/7. There were city employees at City Hall for how many days was it straight that we were open 24 hours?
Five straight 24 hours, but then remotely.
Yeah, 24 hours a day. Staff was monitoring everything and communicating with the public, so we just wanted to acknowledge that. And I also want to acknowledge that there were shortcomings, not necessarily by our own city, by outside agencies that have to be addressed, and we will be doing that. SCE, AT&amp;T, and Spectrum, all these things we learned from Woolsey that people were cut off. I heard especially in the Mulwood neighborhood and portions of Lost Virginus, no power, no internet, no phone service, had a hard time getting emergency alerts. So that's something that we will be working on. Our staff has already been doing great work on that and I know Mayor Kraut attended a meeting and a bunch of us have been speaking to our local legislators, so that's something really important. Another thing that I want to focus on is that it was learned that our local fire stations, at least one of them, when they lost power, they don't have a backup generator. That's not safe for everyone and that's really something that should never occur. So something that we need to look into. And then I know also a big question that people have is how is the water supply here different than what happened in the Palisades where firefighters ran out of water? So those are conversations we'll be having with Lost Virginus Municipal Water District, who is in a much better position than what we saw in the Palisades fire. So we will continue these conversations. So if you have questions or experienced things during the fire that you want the council to know, please communicate that to us. And again, a huge thank you to Mason who's here. Thank you, you did amazing. So thank you to everyone. That's it.
Mayor Protam Bazagian?
I know a lot's been said about the fire. I wanted to highlight in particular the wonderful work done on our northern border, the Kenneth fire. For those who were evacuated or were told that they would probably have to evacuate in Malibu Canyon, Saratoga Hills, the entire west side of Calabasas. It really looked like the entire area was going to be engulfed and it was just a miracle that they were able to work so hard and so quickly against those winds to stop the fires right at the borders of the habitation. And we didn't lose anything other than some grass that was scorched in Gates Canyon Park, but that was—it was it. So thank you very much to our first responders for their wonderful work. I did want to also mark two other tragic events that happened since our last council meeting. We lost two very significant historical figures. Obviously, our president Jimmy Carter, who passed away since our last meeting, and our flags are at half mast out of respect. And more locally, one of our original city council members and one of our early mayors who served on the first city council and served for six years of early cityhood and helped incorporate the city, Marvin Lapata, who also passed away in December. So we mark their passing and I'm sure with respect to Marvin Lapata, we will have an adjourned memory at a future date, but please note that's why the flags are being flown at half mast or were flown at half mast. Thank you.
All right, and I'll not repeat what's already been said. I will give special recognition to the organizations that got us through the fire, CAL FIRE, LA City Fire, of course, our very own LA County Fire, the LA City Police, and our very own LA County Sheriff's Department, as well as dozens of organizations from all over California and across California. We're eternally grateful for you to be here protecting us and helping us get through this crisis here. I want to special thanks to our EOC staff. These city staff members of ours, that's not their full-time job. They have a day job. They work 40 hours a week here and then when the fires hit, we ask if they'll stay all the way through the night maintaining communication, patrolling the streets, clearing the trees, getting the word out. And they do, they volunteer, they show up, they're here. And I had the privilege of dropping by unannounced many times during the fires and I saw a lot of the same people sitting in the same chairs. Six hours, 12 hours, 24 hours. I want to specially thank our city manager. After being here for two days, he was sent home to go to sleep. He did for three hours and then he got up and started answering text messages. Our assistant city manager, Scott Truhulow. Where is Scott? Oh, there he is. You know, these guys were here tirelessly. I hate to single the two of them out because there were so many other people that were involved in that process, so do understand when we talk about our emergency operations center, that's staffed by the same people who are at your public counters during the day and doing the jobs that we pay them to do and they step up when we have an emergency. So thank you. Also here tonight, Epic, our fire safe council, emergency preparedness in Calabasas, our partners in getting the word out and educating the community. So many people asked about home hardening last week. Home hardening's a topic we should be talking about year-round, so let's just make a note of that. If you two are wondering about brush clearance or anything like that, let's remember to wonder about that in March and in June and July and September and October and next December and next January. Okay, let's not forget. If you're looking for more information, you can start at cityofcalabasas.com-publicsafety. Just one more quick note on what Councilmember Weintraub mentioned. Our state assemblywoman Jackie Irwin, during the midst of this crisis, called together our Speaker of the State Assembly, Robert Rivas, as well as three other assembly members who came here to our community to have a conversation about what we needed, what was working, and how they could help. And first of all, without belittling the lives that were lost, the homes that were lost, the jobs that were lost, many of us here in Calabasas had issues like power outages and cellphone coverage and traffic lights that were out and things like that. And they sat here and listened to our conversation and made note and they're going to Sacramento to make change. And I can tell you that our voices were heard. We had seven cities and two school districts and a water district all represented in this meeting. So for those of you that have shared your comments and concerns about how we got through that, I want you to know they did not fall on deaf ears and I'm looking forward to giving you some results later. We've got a big agenda tonight. I want to end with a happy note because we can. Our community services are alive and well. Friday, February 21st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Calabasas Community Center, we're having date night, Parents Night Out. Drop your kids off, we'll watch them, you go have dinner. It's $25 per child, pre-registration is required. Check it out on our website. And we also have coming back the usual—the Bunny Trail, our junior egg hunt, which will be March 23rd at Juan Batista De Anza Park from 9:00 a.m. to 11:50. I'm sure you'll hear those meetings again, but if you're looking for a date night, you'll want to sign up while there's still room available. And now that you've heard way too much from your council, it's time to hear from you. So we'll move on to public comments. If there is anyone here wishing to speak on public comment, I'll ask you to fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and get that to our city clerk, starting with the ones that I have. And my apologies for putting you on the spot. I'm going to let you go first, Mr. Mark Levinson. And if you would, you know the drill, please let us know your name and your city of residence. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I don't need three. Mark Levinson, I live in Los Angeles. I am the meeting pass chair of the Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to mention a couple of things really quickly and to acknowledge all that the city did in the way of power prevention, fire prevention, and how they reached out to the community at large. I mean, those things are in the paper every day and we saw how much the city has done and their staff, as you say, 24 hours a day. It's amazing. And unfortunately, there's still a lot to be done and I know the city will undertake that as well. The chamber certainly has stepped up in providing resources, in providing referrals where people can get help and will continue to do so. If you have questions about the nature of the help you need, please call us, we'll be happy to help you. And then just one more thing, thank you to the city council and especially Mayor Kraut, who's going to install the new chamber board this Saturday at our gala. So thank you very much for that. Look forward to seeing all of you there.
Thank you. Next up, we have Parker Pereira?
Pereira.
Pereira?
Yeah. Everybody gets it wrong. It's okay. Hi, I'm Parker Pereira. I currently—sorry for the nervous first time doing this. I live in the Calabasas Highlands. I've come here today to ask the city council to start a discussion on the Calabasas Highlands and what happens in the event of another fire, in the event that a fire starts within the neighborhood or just outside of it. I mainly want to talk about Canyon Drive because it's the only entrance into Calabasas Highlands, if any of you don't know. For those—the residents of my neighborhood desperately need another way to get in and out. I'm only 30 years old, but this is my third time evacuating in less than 10 years. There have been a few issues with congestion and then I'm just a little nervous about the fact that firefighters couldn't make their way into the neighborhood in the event of a fire and everybody had to leave. Back in 2016, a fire broke out on Mulholland Highway that quickly spread to the Highlands. Fortunately or unfortunately, not many people were home. A few years ago, there was a chimney fire in the middle of the night. Thankfully, the firefighters were able to put that out, but we have about 200 homes there. So in the event that we all had to leave at the same time, we wouldn't be able to all make it out at the same time. All these—but I really wanted to talk about Canyon Drive. A few years ago, there was a mudslide that prevented everybody from leaving the neighborhood or entering. So in the event of a fire, I don't know how that would work. I was forced to take my computer with me in this past fire because that was the only way that I was able to rebuild if the fire were to hit. I just want to make sure that if there's another fire that nobody has to force, like where you can take as much possessions as we want. I know that we do have fire road in the back of our neighborhood, but there's a few issues with that, the fact that there's a dirt road and that leads to private residents. There's a gate at the bottom of the hill and that the electricity is out, we might not be able to get out. And we also might not be able to—the gate might not open on itself. So I just ask the city council that at least with this time, look into developing another entrance and exit to the neighborhood, whether that's on Poppy Drive or Glade Yoda Drive or other suggestions are welcome. Having this entrance will ease the minds of the residents of the neighborhood. The Highlands, I believe, has been around since the 70s and needs to be updated to modern standards. This isn't a question about whether another fire will occur, but when. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarity, we can't respond to items that are not on the agenda, but you have been heard and we'll share that with our city manager and find the next correct course of action. Next up speaking is Sarita Kramer? Did I get that right? Sarita?
Sandy. Sandy.
And my apologies if I've mispronounced that. Just share with us your name?
I'm Sandy Kramer. I own the shopping center where the fire was. I've owned it since '79. I've always taken care of all the land around there and about seven or eight years ago, I found out that the State Parks owns that land. And recently, I found out that they are supposed to be clearing 200 feet from any house, building. They're not doing it. I've talked to them, talked to a very nice young man who said, oh yes, we're going to get back to you, we're going to clear everything. I said, that? This time, it came down to the apartments and I saw them putting the red, whatever it is, on it. There was—it's not clear. They are not taking care of that property and I think that somebody has to do something to get them to do—to do it. You know, the tenants keep losing food, they're throwing it out, we're always on alert and it's getting worse. So if anybody here knows who I could talk to, State Parks, just call me or send me an email. That's it. I feel sorry for everybody in Hidden Hills and up on the hill and, you know, there's a lot of homes in that area and a school. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I do note we have your email address on your speaker card here. Next up is Ali Payani?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ali Payani. I live here in Calabasas. My family, friends, relatives are all live here, my business company here, and I'm a board member at the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce as well. So I was at my office when I just found out that the Kenneth fire was just near my house in Lost Virginus. So I rushed home and me and my wife, we saw the fire firsthand, all the ashes and the smoke obviously everywhere. And then we've been told that we have a few minutes just to leave. And we'll—just looking at the CAL FIRE map, we just thought that we probably going to lose the house. But we saw the incredible work of the firefighters, police, and all the first responders to protect people and community. And neighbors were helping and checking on each other and later same night, we worked with along with the firefighters and some neighbors to put out some small brushes fire in the area. And I think it's—it was really great that we see like the community's strength, but it's still important to be obviously better be prepared. I see like obviously a few notes also I heard today was same with—we didn't have the electricity as well, no coverage. Even the fire was coming back at I think 4:00 a.m. I was like awake to make sure because we didn't have any cellphone coverage to figure—to find it out. And then those are some—like a few problems, but this experience really got me thinking that we should do something, maybe even like—the first thing I was planning to do was launching a fundraising program to support the firefighters and to really understand and going to find—find out exactly what they need, like if they don't have like the backup power, so that's exactly like what I was looking for. More stations, more fire engines, so what is it exactly that they need? And if we really need to launch a fundraising campaign with the people because I believe like this is Calabasas, so we shouldn't have the problem on the fundraising part, so we can provide it. But obviously, there are other issues that we should focus on that you pointed out. Some of them was on running an educational program or maybe inquire the other—other neighbors and people to join these programs or protecting houses and how we can maybe make changes or add any improvement to existing structures. And so that would be basically what I wanted to be here and ask the council to prioritize the wildfire preparation and even see like how we can work with the businesses, communities to bring like everyone's together to work. Or again, if it's the fundraising for firefighters, we want—that's what I'm going to focus on for the next few months with my network, with the business and the chamber. But also want to ask the council that how can the council support and help expedite the fundraising program for fire department and specific steps or plans the city has to prepare for the next wildfire that could be more public with people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Randy Filish.
Good evening, Mayor Kraut and council members. I'm Randy Filish. I am a resident of Calabasas. I'm also an environmental commissioner. I'm thrilled to announce that the 2025 Environmental Forum will take place on February 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And everyone's invited and our topic is going to be coexisting with nature, the Wallace-Annenberg Wildlife Crossing Bridge and our ecosystem. We're going to have the National Wildlife Federation speakers, Beth Pratt, and we will have the agency partners, including Caltrans, also including National Park Service, wildlife biologists, who will speak on the whole process and what is going on and when we can expect to see the next stages and everything you wanted to know. One thing that is timely is they're also going to be speaking about how the wildfires have affected our wildlife and how the bridge will be an asset if we have another wildfire in that area. So we invite everyone to attend. Again, it's at Founder's Hall and it is on February 20th, which is a Thursday, less than a month away, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Also, on a separate note, I would like to thank Joe Chilko from the Epic. We met with him on Monday evening before the fires broke out and he gave us two of the two-way radios and it was amazing. We felt like we were connected and I just want to again express our appreciation to Joe and the volunteers for the fire preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more speaker card. It is from Adam Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm a resident—or my name's Adam Smith. I'm a resident of Calabasas and I just wanted to give a few comments today in my normal—my job that I do. I'm around the EOCs a lot and I just want to praise the city of Calabasas for—I know how much work goes into those and I was very proud to be a resident of Calabasas and see how you all were working around the clock. I thought the communication from the city of Calabasas was excellent. My wife was monitoring all the time. We felt that we had timely updates and she stays at home and gave her a lot of peace getting those updates regularly. As far as the Epic program, I think it's amazing. I think our city's doing something that I don't know that any other city's doing, especially in regards to handing out these two-way radios. I picked up mine not long ago and so I'm so thankful to have them. But for those residents watching, I'd like to encourage them to use them when stuff like this happens because right when this fire kicked off, I turned mine on, started reaching out on my channel to my neighbors to see, okay, who—who would need help? And it was just dark. No-one was really using them. So I think we can work on maybe a little more education on that and hopefully get them into more people's hands. The—the great thing was Channel 16, we were able to listen to the ham radio operators and so we were getting updates there, so I loved it. I thought it was great. Something great if residents haven't considered, because we were having power outages, maybe there would be a potential loss of a cell tower, I took one with me to work because I had to still go in. My wife stayed at home and I said, you leave it on and that way if— wife stayed at home. And I said, you leave it on. Now, if we lose cell power, you get evacuated. When I get back into the city, you just stay in the city somewhere. I'll get on the radio. So I think it's an amazing system. I just encourage residents that don't have those radios to go get them immediately. Just some other things I noticed during this emergency was the lower end of Parkway, Calabasas, heading down toward Calabasas Drive, lights were blacked out there. And when it's... When a light's blacked out, you got to treat it like a stop sign, but no one was doing that. People were blowing right through that. So I would just ask that the city consider some sort of traffic enforcement that we can bring in on contract during those times for that. In addition, maybe generators, maybe the city could have a contract to have them on standby for residents who do lose power, that can use them temporarily during that emergency. The third thing I noticed, being in the fire zones during this emergency, was Starlink was an incredible tool to get Wi-Fi calling and internet into those areas that had destroyed all the infrastructure. So I don't know if it's possible to get some sort of Starlink contract for the city with mobile hotspots that we could deploy into these areas, so residents can at least be on that internet. Thank you very much for your time.
So that's the last of our public comments. I want to thank everyone who shared their experiences, especially in light of the recent fires that we've had, and the lessons that we've learned, and the praises that we have to share. So thank you all. Next up on the agenda is our consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. She beat you out, Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next up on our agenda is a public hearing. We had scheduled the El Camino Real Bell Marker Historic Designation. I'd like to ask for a motion to continue this hearing to February 12th, 2025?
Second.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Bazagian, seconded by, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Bazagian, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item, item number nine, the Community Development Block Grant Program for 2025 to 2026. I believe we have a presentation tonight from our deputy city manager, Michael McConville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. In addition to my presentation, we do have the city's CDPG consultant, Michael Neal, joining us remotely via Zoom, if you have any additional questions. So the... For... Oh, I do see it. For tonight's meeting, each year, we receive a sum of money from the federal government, specifically HUD or the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department. These funds are... These funds can be used for the... For a variety of issues, but primarily to help the residents of low and moderate income folks, specifically those residents in the City of Calabasas. For fiscal year 2526, the city's estimated to receive $113,000 approximately. And we are recommending that we continue to fund the city's very popular residential rehabilitation program. So a little bit about CDPG before we get into residential rehabilitation. Again, these are used to provide housing, economic and social services, and community development opportunities that principally benefit those that are low and moderate income. Receiving the $113,000, a little bit of a curveball we're throwing at the City Council this year, is that in addition to $100,000 for the residential rehabilitation program, we are asking for the council to approve approximately $13,000 in asbestos and lead-based paint testing and abatement. So it's a little bit of a different requirement, but what we're finding over the past few years is that when we're repainting items, we... Our folks' homes, we do have to go test that pet... Excuse me, the paint for lead and other items. So getting into the residential rehabilitation program, what is it? This is a program that we offer our residents that provide up to $15,000 to residential property owners, including mobile homes, for emergency repairs and safety improvements. So what type of items does consist of? Could be plumbing repairs, could be electrical roofing, heating, ventilation, so on and so forth. Again, these are to help folks that, according to HUD guidelines, two people would not exceed $88,000 annually. So it is limited both in location, City of Calabasas residents, and the income amount that you report on your federal taxes. So a little bit of a snapshot for the city's residential rehabilitation program. There is very high demand for this program, and specifically these grants. There is approximately 25 prospective applicants on this waiting list currently. Funding is limited, and it's approved on a first-come, first-come... Excuse me, first-come, first-served basis. Just this past year, we successfully completed two projects, and hope to complete an additional eight by the end of this fiscal year, which would be June 30, 2025. If the City Council approves the budget for the residential rehabilitation program as recommended, we will hope to serve another eight households in this upcoming fiscal year for 2526. And so just to provide a quick snapshot of what these programs look like, we have here a home in the mobile park. You can see on the left-hand side, this is a before picture of some of the structural foundational issues. There were some mold remediation, some of the foundation, really, again, a public safety hazard for this resident. And you look on the right-hand side, you'll notice here that the windows were replaced. This was, again, ventilation, bad circulation. And you can even see that they had to tear on the right-hand side most of that foundation out. So with this, with this grant, we were able to actually get a locally-owned contractor, which was a double, a double plus here, right, to keep those funds here in the City of Calabasas. And we were really proud of that. And the final product, which can be seen here, right, beautifully repainted unit there, the windows have been installed, and then the foundation is safe and, again, fresh and new. So the, again, the purpose of this public hearing is for the council to approve the recommended allocation of the funding in CDPG funds for $113,000. For any of those here, anyone that's watching online, you can visit the city's website at cityofcalabasas.com/CDPG, or contact the city's residential rehabilitation program specialist, consultant, excuse me, at 909-261-2770. That concludes the presentation from me. Again, myself and Michael Neal, our consultant, are available.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And before we hear from members of the public, I'd like to ask my council, my fellow council members, if they have any questions, noting that we'll be circling back after the public comment for deliberations. Any questions from the council? Questions or comments?
Yes, just one. Thank you. Just, could you repeat the number, please? That was just for anybody at home or who was watching. Thank you.
Yes, I will show it. Okay, I won't show it. The phone number is 909-261-2770. Again, that's the direct line. Go ahead and contact the City Hall Main Reception, 818-224-1600, and we'll be sure to get you connected as well.
Thank you.
No, we're going to hear from the public first, and then we'll come back for comments. So let's, let's move to the public then. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? You guys are all here for the next one, aren't you? All right. With that, I see no additional speakers. I can now close the public hearing and open it up to council deliberations. Councilmember Albrecht, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. You know, I've read this, what it's all about. This is really such a compassionate opportunity for those that are financially challenged, especially later in life. Fixing up your home, even when you are working in your younger years, is expensive then. I can only imagine later on. So I'm so happy to vote on this. And its success has been going on now for 51 years, and I hope it continues for another 51 exponentially.
Thank you. Councilmember Shapiro.
I fully support this, and I think it is wonderful. I hope in the years to come, we can even get more funds. Thank you.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you for the presentation, and I support the CDPG program.
Councilmember Bazagian.
I...
Mayor Protem Bazagian.
I don't have any questions or comments. Thanks.
Okay. And I have no questions or comments either. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-1945, approving the CDPG 51st program year, 2025 to 2026.
Still moved?
Second.
This is moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. All right. So next up on our agenda, we have our Commissions Committee and Council appointments. The city clerk, Lisa Pope, will present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Following each council election and even numbered years, the council has the opportunity to make appointments to its city commissions, committees, and councils. It would probably be easiest to go through each one of these one at a time. And then following the oaths, I will review the recommended changes to the commission and recruitment process. So Mayor, if you'd like to go through those?
So are we going to read them off, you mean?
Our first one would be the Council at Large Appointment to Art in Public Places.
Oh, gotcha. We're going to do the individual ones. Okay. At this time, I would like to make a motion to nominate Laurel Ford for the Council at Large Appointment to Art in Public Places. Is there a second?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
I have a second by Councilmember James Bazagian. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, next position here I'd like to nominate would be Negan Gafari as the Council at Large Appointment to the Arts Council. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've had council appointments. Are there any changes to the proposed appointments by each council member to the commissions as listed in the agenda report? Can I start on my left with Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes. I have... My environmental commissioner will not be serving any longer, so I need to go back out for that one.
Okay. So for the city clerk, we'll remove that one position. Councilmember Bazagian, any changes to your submitted report?
No changes, but I would just note that I still have a library commissioner to appoint, which I will try to do as soon as I can. I was not ready to do it for this, this time.
Mayor Protem Bazagian. It's going to take me a meeting or so to get used to that.
It's okay. I really don't care. That's all.
Councilmember Shapiro.
I have no changes. I'm thrilled to put forward all applicants.
Great. Councilmember Albrecht?
I have no changes. I do have one commissioner for the Communications Technology Commission, who's absent. He has the flu, Michael Brockman. He called me today. I think he tried to reach Lisa. So we'll have to schedule that for another time. He's looking forward to being part of it again.
Great. And for anybody that is appointed here that cannot be here this evening, we will redo the oath of office at another time. But we're going to ratify all of our appointments this evening. So with those changes, I have no changes to my appointments. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to ratify those appointments to the Communications and Technology Commission, the Environmental Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, Parks, Recreation, and Education Commission, Planning Commission, Public Safety Commission, and Traffic and Transportation Commission.
Are we going?
The alternate is going to be coming up soon on the agenda. Just because of the way that it was written, we are getting to that one.
I had a question. Are we going to introduce the commissioners? I mean, is there the ones who are here?
I don't believe we are.
Okay. Have we kept track of who's here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So in the interest of getting to business, I think we've got a little more streamlined process this year.
So Mayor, if we could have a motion to approve those appointments to the commissions?
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We also have appointments from Councilmember Albrecht and Councilmember Weintraub to the Library Commission. Can I get a motion to, in favor of those appointments?
Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Steiner as the Council at Large Appointment to the Planning Commission alternate seat. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. Any other nominations? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's five zero. All right. We're getting close, guys. May I have a motion to confirm the appointment of Richard Sherman, the Calabasas Savvy Senior's Advisory Group nominee to the Parks, Recreation, and Education Commission?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Albrecht, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Finally, can I get a motion to acknowledge the mayor's appointments to the mayor's youth council that was printed in our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And I have a move by Mayor Protem Bazagian, and a second by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This concludes the appointments to the city's commissions. I want to take a moment to thank all of our residents who applied for an appointment. We had tremendous turnout, and I'm always very proud of how involved our community is, and I'm grateful for their willingness to serve. For those of you who are appointed, I want to thank you all for showing up here tonight, for offering to serve our community, for getting involved. And we appreciate each and every one of you, and the hard work that you've given us in the past, and the hard work that I'm sure you're going to contribute here in the near future. If you have been appointed, would you please stand for the city clerk to administer the oath of office?
If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you. We did have a request for a photo, so if everyone could come up in front of the dais, and if the council could stand up behind them, that would be great.
If I could have your attention for one more moment here. Wait, before you leave, everybody, if I could just take one more moment of your time, what I want to do is just... We in the past have done this group by group, commissioned by... by commission, in the interest of time and efficiency. We did this as a group, but I'd like to at least take a quick moment and read off the names of our Commissioners, so we can actually acknowledge that you've been here and you've been appointed. So, for the, we have for the Arts Council, Negan Gaffari. We have for Art and Public Places, Laurel Ford. We have for the Communications and Technology Commission, Michael Brockman, Candace Weber, Dana Marie Taylor, Kartik Netar, and Carrie Melcher. For the Environmental Commission, we have Larissa Byrne, David Cohen, Randy Filish, Whitney Schwartz, and Beth Jagtiani. I'm sorry, not Beth Jagtiani, she was the one who's not available. For the Historic Preservation Commission, we have Arvin Fedros, Justin Ford, Mark Silverman, Michael Human, and Carol Stephan. For the Library Commission, we have Monica Parmar, Laurel Ford, Anita McQuillan, Julie Elginor, Brad Klein, Stephanie Williams, and Patty Mardell. For the Pre-Commission Senior Liaison, we have Richard Sherman. For the Planning Commission, we have Matthew Husena, Michael Harrison, Robert Lea, Wendy Fosberg, and Dennis Washburn. For the Planning Commission Alternate, we have Candace Steiner. For the Public Safety Commission, we have Sharon Boucher, Jeff Peran, see, this is why we don't read the names. Perano, Joe Chilko, Brian Cameron, Matt Slatoff. And for the Traffic and Transportation Commission, we have Mike Pashai, Richard Castle, Adam Smith, Jason Spurling-Rike, and Heath Patton. And then, on the Mayor's Youth Council, we have Ava Kingsrud, Avi Shah, Bailey Strohl, Beverly Legoy, Dylan Stein, Ella Kingsrud, Ethan Shapiro, Gia Parker, Haley Kramer, Isla Golfarb, Jake Matalone, Josh Lippman, Kinu Langrudi, Lauren Weintraub, Levy Trubener, Mason Wilgus, Mia Matalong, Paige Dobkuske, Celia Langrudi, and finally, Sienna Strohl. We've tried to streamline this so that you guys can show up, get your oath of office, and be home by dinner, but I didn't want to go without acknowledging each and every one of you for your service. Thank you for being here. You're more than welcome to slip out while we deal with the rest of the grueling business of the city. And you're also welcome to stay. Okay. Council, we have a few other things to get to this evening. For the remainder of Item Number 10, I want to circle back to our City Clerk, Lisa Pope.
Thank you, Mayor. During this process of recruitment, and as a newbie here in the city, I did come across some things that I'd like to recommend to the council. Based on best practices, I would recommend changing the terms for all Commissioners from two years to four years to coincide with the appointing council member. Clarifying the terms for consistency, modifying the code to clarify the commencement of terms. The Planning Commission does not currently have a student Commissioner, and I know that they would like one, and so for consistency, I think all the Commissions should have student Commissioners. If there's council support for those, we, after you discuss it, it would require an ordinance amendment, so we would bring that back at a future meeting. Additionally, staff recommends removing the requirement for the, all applications to be included in the Agenda Packet, and rather making them accessible at City Hall. With privacy issues and identity theft, it's a tough pull to get that accomplished, and so for best practices, we would just recommend having them available. Removing the requirement for nominees to appear in person before the council, and rather having the oaths administered at the Commission Meetings or by the City Clerk. It's pretty difficult logistically to get everyone here, and sometimes it's difficult for their, them to get here. And those changes just mentioned would be reflected in the council protocols, so that would be an amendment to that. So, I appreciate council's input on these recommended changes, and whether or not you'd like to have those brought back as an ordinance amendment or council policies.
And, I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm following along on the Agenda Packet. Was this right before or right after the nominees?
We are looking at the bottom of Page Four of your process. It's Item Number 10, Recommendation Number Eight. At the top of Page Two of the Agenda Report, it's to provide direct, council to provide direction on recommended municipal code updates and council protocol changes. It's still the Commission item.
Yep, I'm asking, do we have the written list of the items you just gave us?
In the Agenda Report, yes, I'm sorry. On Page Five of Six, there's three bullets at the bottom there that were municipal code updates. Changing the terms from two to four years to coincide with the nominating council member.
Okay, let's go ahead and open this up for discussion, then. Can I start with Councilmember Shapiro?
Sure. Yes, I like the idea. I'll work in reverse order on the three. One, non-voting student member on each Commission. I support that. The second code, the second bullet point makes sense as well. I understood about having the applications available for us, or for anyone, I guess, at City Hall to come look at, as long as hopefully council will have access for, before making their decisions. So, I support that as well. Nominees in person, I will wait to hear the rest of my colleagues have to say. I am not in favor myself, but I'll listen to what everyone else has to say, of changing the term for Commissioners to two to four years. Four years is a long time on some of these Commissions, and we, I'd like to see, hopefully, in the future, and I have in the past, new Commissioners come forward, new people get involved, and get excited about volunteering in the city, and as we stagger our election cycles, a two-year or a four-year could go into a different cycle, meaning you'd have to run again to have that Commissioner still be, or run and win in order to have a Commissioner still be yours, because the cycle, in other words, we've just had an election, a winning election, by two of our, the mayor and former mayor. In two, in a year, in ten months, eleven months, there's another election with three potential seats. So, appointing someone for four years would carry beyond that. That means if someone else new came in, they wouldn't have the opportunity to appoint someone. So, that being said, I'm more likely to support two years for that reason.
Could you clarify for us the four-year term?
Yeah, it would run with your council seat, so if Councilmember Weintraub and Mayor Kraut were just elected in November, they would have the appointments right now for two years, or for four years. And so, when the other three are elected in two years from now, in 2027, those three would make their appointments for four years.
I understand that. My first point on that of trying to incentivize or excite community members to get more involved would apply to the two years, but I'll wait to hear what my colleagues say.
Okay. Ed?
Thank you. Well, while we're on the two and four years, initially, and logistically, it sounds like a great idea, four years, and it is cumbersome to change, but also, there's an advantage to doing two years. These Commissions, and most of them only meet four times a year, and most likely, they'll have a cancellation during that year. I've seen that very often, so it could be three, and by the time you get your feet wet, it's really too early after two years to have to get reappointed and take the oath all over again. I really am supportive of having two years. I'd love to do it in four, but also, you may have some unwilling participants. There are absenteeism. Four years is a long time to have Commissioners that you wish you had better participation, and I'm favoring the two-year part. I love the non-voting student members. I think the whole idea with a Mayor's Youth Council, and having students involved, it's shortly after they graduate high school, that they're mature individuals, and this will give them a great foundation and confidence of being around government and how it operates. I'm missing one now, which is the Commens upon Appointment. I think I covered all of it. Did I, am I missing one? Two to four. I got three.
In-person is the one you didn't mention.
I am certainly backwards a little bit. Remove the requirement for the nominee to appear in person before council. That would make things a lot easier and effective, especially if we could clarify if someone is out of town, if they could do it from their location, hotel or otherwise. That would be helpful, and remove the requirement that applications be included in the Agenda. Yeah, I would be in favor of that.
You would?
I would be, yes.
Councilmember Shapiro, did you comment on the in-person?
I did. I was going to wait to hear what my colleague said, but I am not opposed to it at all.
And if I could just clarify also on the two to four-year term, there, the thought process was, and based on other cities' best practices, is you could potentially have five new Commissioners every two years.
I was going to say, we don't tech, really do that very often. There are very few changes in this last go-round, I think, two.
Yep. Councilmember Weintraub?
Okay, can you go through the list again? I support the student Commissioners. I support, here, I'll let you ask the questions, and then I'll.
Thank you. So, the first question is two or four-year terms coinciding with the council member's term in office?
I'm kind of indifferent on it. I think once we have a system in place, which I think we do now, it'll be a lot easier to track. I'm a little bit indifferent on that, so we'll come back to that one.
Number two for the municipal code is basically just cleanup, so hopefully you're all in support of that, but it's just modifying the code to make it consistent. And then, the student Commissioner, you said yes. Removing the requirement for all applications to be attached to the Agenda?
Yes.
And requiring in-person appearance by the Commissioners to take the oath.
I'm fine with that not happening. The only thing I wanted to add into all of this is attendance for Commission Meetings. If you, if there's issues with Commissioners not attending, if the council, appointing council member can be notified, and so.
There is a provision in the municipal code regarding attendance, and I will ensure that the liaisons for each Commission are tracking that and notifying me so that I can notify you if there's any issues.
Great.
That might have to be looked at again, because that was written when we had monthly Commission Meetings. I think it says a couple in a row. Now, a couple in a row is all year. They're not there.
So, that would be part of the cleanup?
Yes.
I believe it's three unexcused absences?
But that's basically a year's worth of absences now. It used to be three months in a row.
Maybe that's something that, you know, just because there's so much interest in serving on the Commissions, we want to make sure that the people that we appoint are actively participating.
I can bring that back as part of the cleanup
That'd be great.
For your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bazagian?
Okay, I support the consistency. I think we need to look at that, because some of these were written at different times, and others have not been updated as we've changed certain ones. I support the students being on each Commission. I thought that had already been done, but if not, then we should do it. With the in-person, I would like to see them in person. I think it's not too much to ask them to come once in a blue moon to get sworn in, and to introduce themselves to the public. There obviously could be exceptions if someone's unable physically to do that, or it's a danger to them to come for, you know, whatever, you know, COVID or whatever residual problems they might have in coming. I like the staggered idea. I think it's a good idea to do the staggered terms and make them four-year terms. There'll be Commission Seats on each Commission, with the exception of the Library Commission, which is an exception in of itself. There'll always be some seats up, as long as we were, it's okay with me, as long as we retain the ability to remove Commissioners in two ways, one by majority of the council, and the other by the council member, so that if a new council member's elected or takes office during, you know, an appointment, and then, because someone's left, then they can remove the Commissioner if they wish, and appoint someone of their choice. I did want to point out one exception I think we should make to that four-year rule. I think that it should not apply to alternates and at-large appointments. Those should be recommended by the mayor, and should be rotating, if not, every two years and every year. There's been a suggestion in the past that if you go every other year with, like, for example, with the Planning Commission Alternate, certain mayors don't get their recommendation. I mean, you know, that's something to take a look at, but I certainly think that if you change them to be every four years, I do not want, if the council agrees, I don't think those specialized appointments should be every four years. They should come back more frequently, either two years or one year.
You said the at-large and which other one, I'm sorry?
Well, any ones like the Savvy Seniors Appointment to the pre, the Historical Society's Appointment to the, you know, Historic Commission, what, all those special ones, SERP, to the Public Safety, those should all be annual or every two years, not four years. So, those are my comments. I mean, that's my, my opinion. I think that was kind of overlooked. We didn't really, you didn't ask us about those, but that, it seems kind of obvious.
And Councilmember Bazagian, as far as a student member on each Commission?
I said that, yes.
Non-voting, you had that, okay.
I support it.
Great. So, I guess that leaves me. I will say that I am also in favor of the four-year term coinciding with the election of the council member, which staggers them so that we have, you know, half of the Planning Commission, half of the, each Commission being changed out every two years. I'm certainly in favor of a non-voting student, student member on each Commission, and the cleanup of the code, and I would have to agree with Mayor Pro Tem Bazagian regarding the annual appointment of the, the, the special seats there, the at-large appointments. As far as the in-person, I'm torn. We spend a lot of time here in meetings covering stuff, spend a lot of hours here. I think it'd be very efficient to have them sworn in at their Commission Meetings. If we do that, I would just strongly encourage the city, in all of our city events, our holiday parties and stuff, to make an extra outreach to our Commissioners to make sure that they feel included as this, you know, part of the city. I think it's important that they become part of our community, part of our celebrations, and I think if we do a better job of that, then I think it's not necessary to have them sworn in here in person. And of course, as we have so much business to conduct tonight, our closed session ended with less than a minute to go before seven o'clock. We didn't even really have a chance to meet and greet all of those Commissioners that were here. So, I'd like to see us really try hard to figure out how to include all of our Commissioners in the other events where we have time to mingle with them, and if we can do that, I'm in favor of having them sworn in at their Commission Meetings instead of here. I think that would be it. So, our agenda, before I close this item, is to make a recommendation to our City Clerk, who would then come back with an ordinance amending the municipal code with our ideas that we would have to present and vote on at a future meeting. So, before I close this item, I did want to circle back one more time if anybody has any. item, I did want to circle back one more time. If anybody has any other clarifying items that they wanted to add, I can see Councilmember Shapiro is ready to go.
Ready to go. It sounds like I will support the in-person. I think that was what you had said, right, for the swearing-in. But just to clarify, my support for the two-year cycle is, we run, we make an active choice to run for a council seat, which is four years. A lot of volunteers may not have that same time or same-time commitment to give, or, again, things change in the world. Things change in life. So I don't think it's so bad that every two years they come back and we reappoint them, or we appoint someone new to that opportunity. So that's all I'll say.
And I think tonight's the night to say it, because we're a little divided on two-year or four-year term, and we're a little divided on swearing in in-person or at the commission meetings. So what I'd like to do is, let's discuss this until we've reached an agreement so that our city clerk only has to draft this ordinance once. Councilmember Alpert?
Yeah. My biggest argument against the two and four years essentially was, what if you have a commissioner who loses interest, has poor attendance? If it's magistrateed and there's a reporting on it, and we know that, we hear back from the chair of that commission, that attendance is good, everybody's involved and following the agenda and tuned in, I would be in favor of four years. So there gotta be very stringent rules about that, because we don't use commissioners all the time. And there are times there's not much going on, and they wish they had some work to do. And then suddenly, boom, we have something we want to send it down. I have one that I'm pending right now. I'm gonna suggest at some point. But we not, we... They have to be ready when it happens, when the bell rings. So that's my thought. If it's magistrateed and it's constructed in such a way that it's enforced, I would support the four years.
If I could make an alternative suggestion is, I think that running with the council member's term is important. If four years is too long, for whatever reason, you could do two years, but so we'd still have staggered seats. We'd have three, one year and to the next phase.
How would that work with a two-year cycle?
Oh, it wouldn't.
Well, let's just take majority vote. I mean, which one did you like, Ed? I didn't hear what you...
Like I said, if it's enforced, I'll go for the four.
Well, we have to, we have to vote at this point unless there's some persuading arguments of either two years or four years. It can't really be conditional. Are there any other persuading arguments?
I just don't feel that strongly one way, or I just, one way or another. I think from here on out, it's gonna be much more organized with the commissions and commissioners. So, like, two years might work now. I just, I'm not sure. I just think it's like, we have, there's now a system in place.
Well, why, I didn't understand why attendance reporting is conditional on changing it. We should be getting attendance reports if there's a problem anytime. Like, it shouldn't be only if it goes to four years. If I have a commissioner who's not attending for two years, I need to know that.
I think we can all agree that we want attendance reporting, right?
So if we get attendance reports, four years would be my vote.
And mine stays at two for the reasons stated. But the other thing is, when you talk about enforcement, it's not up to the city clerk. It's up to us to enforce that or remove, which in my years here, I've only seen it twice in 12 years, happen once this past year. So it's not an easy thing to do, even if someone's not making commission meetings.
But if the codes change to saying you need to attend these meetings, then it would be an easier thing to do, to remove.
To remove for attendance, sure.
For remove for attendance.
And I would have to say that Councilmember Shapiro has swayed me. I'm leaning back towards the two-year appointment now, only because I wonder how many commissioners will commit to a four-year appointment. And I'd really like to see more applicants, not less in all of our commissions, to get a better selection. So I think for that reason, I'm gonna go with the two years. But, so we have two people at two years? I believe we have three people at four years? Is that right?
No, I really, I'm not passionate about it either way.
You know, I'm the same way. I like it both ways. I like the novelty of it, of where new people come in with new ideas, which is good. But four years just seems a little bit long, unless, you know, there's a requirement to fulfill. But we can do that as evidenced by, one council member can make a call, and then if three council members decide that it's okay, then the change could be made.
No, no, you can remove your own commissioner.
Any council member can remove the commissioner that they appointed.
All right. That didn't seem to be the case with me the year before. What do we have right now?
Should we take a vote? We're voting for two years or four years. All those in favor of a two-year appointment, say aye.
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 Sorry.
Our city attorney.
I just want to interject, I think, a point of information. When we do have commissioners on different commissions, obviously they're subject to the Brown Act. And, you know, obviously getting them familiar with that process, as well as comfortable in the job and the tasks that they're set to do to be on the commission, does take a lot of time on them to get familiar and to understand and get comfortable in their role, as well as for the staff to train them. And I believe this council is good in reappointing those that, those commissioners that have demonstrated concerted effort to get involved and stay involved, which is great. But there may be a time in the future where you've got a council member that just wants to reappoint, or not reappoint, but appoint new members every two years, which then would become more difficult for the commissioner, as well as for the staff, in terms of providing the expertise and the experience and the institutional knowledge. So that's a component. But I do understand that, you know, the issue of wanting new ideas and having a four-year commitment is a longer-term commitment. So that was just a point I wanted to bring forth to you in the event that you're still thinking of whether or not this would be beneficial. So either way, up to you, but that's an additional consideration.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of a four-year appointment? We have two for two years, one for four years. Oh, we have three for two years.
Three for two years.
One for four years, and one abstained. Is that right? So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to debate this anyways, because this is a change to the ordinance. It's gonna have to go back to a public discussion again. So if you would kindly, let's go ahead and draft the ordinance, keeping with the two-year. And then the other change that we were debating here was in-person swearing-in here at a council meeting, or have them sworn in at their commission meetings?
Can I?
Yeah.
If we are going to do an in-person swearing-in, maybe we do it, don't do closed session that night, and start early, and like, do a little meet and greet ahead of time, just something. Because tonight, we don't even really know who was here and who wasn't. Lisa knows, but we don't know. You called out names, and I know those people weren't here. So I think if we're gonna do it in person, we need to make it count and do it a little differently than we do. If not, I'm very supportive of just doing it at the commission meetings. But I think having them sit through a meeting where it's a little chaotic, I don't think that's in the best interest.
And I'd say, I totally agree with you. And I think one of the items that brought this before the council tonight is, when we have, our meetings in December are reorg and then dark, and we start off January, and then in this event, we have a fire for our first meeting in January, we're already so far behind that I'd love to say that we're gonna have the first meeting in January on time and not have a closed session. But I don't know that that's predictable. But I would totally agree with you. We need to find a way to include our commissioners as part of the group and meet them on a social level as well. So that was my point with the swearing-in, is I think it would be more effective to have their swearing-in, their first meeting in January, not here at a council meeting. But we need to find a way to welcome them, to have that hour set aside without a special council meeting, without a closed session where we could chat with them.
Another benefit of when I've done oaths of office prior to commissioners being, starting on the commission, is that I can give them a handbook or the background on their Brown Act obligations and what they need to do as a commissioner. That's not something that's happening here, so however the council wants to do it. But that is beneficial to me.
Thank you. Councilmember Alpert?
Yeah, I've got a good compromise. What seems to be holding this up is, if we're gonna have a closed session, we can't depend on it one way or the other. We won't know. But why don't we have a closed session another night? We know we want to meet the commissioners. We want to respect their time, thank them for being a part of it. It's a big deal to come down here. Their family knows about it. They've thought about it all week. I know one commissioner kept on calling me, what do I do? How do I do it? What should I wear? So I don't think it's very difficult for us to ask even a late afternoon closed session meeting, if necessary, for the purposes of meeting and thanking the commissioners.
That's a great idea.
Good.
With those comments, are we in favor of keeping the oath of office at the first council meeting in January?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
That's fine, either way. I sound like Alicia.
Do you have the direction you need?
I do.
All right.
I will bring back an ordinance and amendment to the council protocols.
All right. It is eight twenty-six. We don't have long to go. Does anyone want to take a break? No? No? Forge on through.
Well, we have... All right.
We have two more items?
Four.
One more item? Hold on.
We're on eleven. Council meeting schedule.
It's gonna take a while.
Well, let's go ahead and get through the meeting schedule and see how long that takes, and then we'll talk about taking a break. All right? Okay, for item number eleven, this is the city council meeting schedule, and our city clerk, Lisa Pope, will present the report.
Thank you. Before I use the proposed schedule for the 2025 city council meetings, the schedule includes regular meetings on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, a special meeting in June to discuss the budget, summer recess in July, and cancellations for Thanksgiving and Christmas. Additionally, the council may wish to consider moving its October eighth meeting due to the Cal Cities Conference, which is October eighth through tenth, and should discuss any other potential conflicts with other agency meetings and conferences. If the dates listed in the agenda report are confirmed, it would be appropriate for a motion. Otherwise, discussion would be great.
Okay. Are there any council questions before, do we open the... No, this, members of the public is coming after. Will the council questions first?
Okay, looking at the calendar, I've gone over it each session. And it turns out, the Cal contract, Lisa, I'm not sure if you mentioned the Cal Cities?
Cal Cities is October.
What date did you have? Because I have it for May fifteenth through seventeenth.
That's Contract Cities. It starts May fourteenth, actually.
Fourteenth and seventeenth, Wednesday.
Fourteenth through eighteenth.
But the first day is not that important.
Well, it is for those of us who go.
Well, for those that play golf, it will, but...
It's not, that's not golf.
Yeah, they usually have the first day as a tournament.
The first day that, well, we traditionally have not had it that day, because Wednesday is when most of us go to the venue. And I have a board meeting, because the Contract Cities Board meets that, that night. So we have never had it on that Wednesday. It's always been moved.
I, I show the Contract Cities as May sixteenth through eighteenth.
Right.
No. What are you looking at?
ContractCities.org calendar?
It's, it starts, the registration starts May fifteenth, but because of its location and because it starts in the morning, and because there's a board meeting that night on the fourteenth, that's the night we have traditionally taken off of our council meeting.
I have one other date, and that is Rosh Hashanah.
I have that.
Comes on September twenty-fourth. That happens to be the second night of Rosh Hashanah. So for those of us that are not Orthodox, it's not that important. So I'd be willing to waive it. I'm not sure if any other members of the council feel the same.
Well, I couldn't...
But I wanted to bring it up.
I couldn't tell. I was trying to look at the calendar.
I looked at the calendar.
But it says, like, September twenty-second and twenty-third. I think it...
Era of Rosh Hashanah.
Twenty-second.
The night before.
Right.
Then you got Rosh Hashanah the first day.
Oh, right.
And then the second day.
Right.
So this is the second day.
Is that a temple day?
They're both temple days for the Orthodox, but for the conservative and Reform, technically, it's, the first day is usually
Right.
more important. But I just wanted to bring it up. So this is the second day. It's not that important to me personally, but David and Peter and you might feel different.
That's a great question. I mean, we want to start with that. Any other dates we want to talk about?
Sure. Could I?
I'm okay with that date.
Sure. Councilmember Shapiro?
Okay. This came up last year, the June eighteenth special meeting. There was a question about graduations and being an issue, events right around the graduation time for schools. I think, Alicia, you brought it up. The September twenty-fourth, I also had a note, because my understanding is the services end in the afternoon that day on the twenty-fourth. So that is second day. So that could get a little, little tight. But other than that, October eighth with League of Cities, you said, is October eighth, correct? So I would think that would be an issue for at least three of us here.
For all, all of us went to the league luncheon, I think, last, I don't know if maybe Alicia didn't.
I couldn't make it.
But, but that's when it starts. We miss, we miss half the convention.
So those are the three, only three dates, if they, if June eighteenth is even an issue. I don't know.
It was always June eleventh was the issue, because that's when the middle, high school graduation's Thursday. But if, if we're invited to the middle school graduations, that was a meeting we maybe just pushed a little later.
I think we moved, we moved it till eight, didn't we, or something?
Yeah, we moved and kept it light.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, and as far as the number of meetings, we typically meet twice a month. That gives us twenty-four meetings in a calendar, except for we take away Thanksgiving and Christmas. We're down to twenty-two meetings. We take away July. That gets us down to twenty meetings. The question is, can we get our business done in twenty meetings or less? Are we rescheduling these or canceling them? I think we'd be rescheduling them. City manager, how many meetings do we need?
You're not paid by the hour, as you know. For us, the, the big meetings are really centered around the budget as a special meeting. I think that's really important. And then also, that special meeting in December is very critical, because otherwise, we have a meeting in November, and then with the reorg in December, we don't have any action items or business meetings until January. So those two are, I think, important to hold to that, that schedule. We can, working with the Budget Committee, if there is one, that's the next item on the agenda, we could discuss if there is that need for that special meeting, maybe pencil it in, and hopefully come back and do that on a regular scheduled meeting.
I have some comments on these meetings. I did flag May fourteenth, because traditionally we haven't had a meeting on that day. And I'd like to keep and practice with that, because, as I recall, several of us went down on that Wednesday anyways, even those who didn't have board meetings. I mean, it's, it's a distance away, and you want to be there for Thursday's activities. On September twenty-fourth, my comment would be, if it conflicts with the religious practices of someone on the council, or if it's not gonna serve the public to have it on that day, because a good portion of the public's not gonna be, it's gonna be indisposed, I don't know. I'll defer to you guys, because I just don't know what the, by six o'clock, if everything's wrapped up, or if it's not. So...
It says, ends at night, it ends at sunset.
Sunset, yeah.
So our meeting's after sunset.
Well, not that time of year. That time of year's eight o'clock.
It's close.
So, I mean, look, I don't, I'll defer to you guys. I don't know whether that would be disruptive. October eighth, October eighth means that we miss the league conference, if we have a meeting here, which is not, we've never done that either. And I did have a question on December third. When you put December third parentheses "special," does that mean you're holding that date, or does that mean, once we approve it, it's definitely that day?
There would be a special meeting calendared in for that date.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those are my, my two requests would be May fourteenth and October eighth.
Okay, so hearing all of this, here's a suggestion. Okay, so hearing all of this, here's a suggestion. The May fourteenth meeting, we should move to either May seventh or May twenty-first. If we move it to May seventh, because of the April twenty-third meeting, that at least gives us the two weeks in between. So I think it would be wiser to move May fourteenth to the seventh instead of moving it to the twenty-first. Does that work for the rest of the council?
Works.
Yeah.
So the October eighth meeting is not going to be that easy. We can either move it to the first, or we could move it to the fifteenth. Either way, we would be back-to-back weeks of council. Any preference from the council? The October eighth meeting. I thought the October eighth meeting.
Yeah, will be gone.
That's the league. That's the league conference. So we need to move that either plus a week or minus a week. Either way, we're going to end up with either back-to-back with September twenty-fourth and October first, or back-to-back with October fifteenth and October twenty-second.
Well, are you keeping September twenty-fourth?
Good point. All right, so it is October first.
So if you got rid of September twenty-fourth, you'd have.
I would have to recommend that we cancel September twenty-fourth. I only celebrate one day of Rosh Hashanah, but I don't think it's fair to those that celebrate. I don't think it's, as was said earlier, serving the community to have it, so.
But isn't it, if we celebrate, the first night would be heir of Rosh Hashanah, then the second night? This is really like the third night.
That, well, an observant Jew would be in temple until sunset on the twenty-fourth. So we'd be asking them, after being in services all day long, to turn around and be here within the hour.
I think I'm looking at the calendar wrong. If that's the case, then we should definitely not have the meeting.
Yeah, it would be sunset the twenty-second till sunset the twenty-third is the Rosh Hashanah that.
Yeah, then let's pick a different day.
So the September twenty-fourth is going to be a conflict.
No, you can just move it to the first, and then you have two weeks in between all the meetings.
What about, what about?
Well, we've moved the October eighth to the first. We could actually just do one less meeting. Should we see if we can get business done?
Yes.
Okay, so.
One question.
Yes, sir.
What about just moving it to the next day? Why do we have to move it a week later? Just for that occasion? We'll move it one day. Instead of having it on a Wednesday, we'll have it on a Thursday.
Well.
We might have planning commission.
You can do that, Ed, but then if we're going to have the meeting moved to October first, that's six days in between meetings. I'm okay with it. I.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea, but I also think we could probably figure out how to get by with one less meeting.
Either way.
You may have a problem. October first, I believe, is Koneedre, the night before Yom Kippur. So I don't think that was.
I'd rather go backwards.
I won't be.
Yeah.
Does Siri know?
Siri knows, in, I don't know what country, but, right? Yeah, because October second is Yom Kippur, and the night before begins.
Yeah, begins October first.
Right. So that would not be a good date. I'd rather the twenty-fifth or.
Would it be possible to do October seventh? I guess that would be pending other commission meetings. That's a Tuesday.
Yes, for me.
Yeah, I think we could do that. I mean, I could do it. Miss my Armenian class.
Does that work?
It's fine for me.
I think so.
So as outlined, we would move the May meeting to May seventh, then cancel the September twenty-fourth meeting, and then propose to meet on October seventh.
Not October eighth.
Correct. Cancel, yeah.
Works for me. Yes.
Yes.
All right.
These all say six o'clock. Are we moving the meetings to six o'clock also?
Well, that's to reserve it for closed session.
For closed session, yeah. We would love to entertain that discussion at some future date of advancing the meeting to six o'clock, six o'clock and closed session at five o'clock, if the council is so inclined.
It's tough to do that for me. I'm sorry.
Okay, and I believe I heard in the discussion that in future council schedules, we do want considered both the league and the Cal Cities conferences as we propose future schedules. So if we could just keep those in mind in future works?
And SCAG.
And the religious holidays.
And the religious holidays and SCAG.
But SCAG is already omitted here, so that's fine.
So, and we would reserve those to the, I would assume, to the larger organizations that multiple members of council participate in.
Sounds great.
Don't forget Orthodox Christmas.
And Orthodox Christmas.
All religions. We're never having a meeting.
Mayor question. I think it would be nice to get a draft of the schedule so we don't have to debate it, and we can kind of submit the dates, and then we can come back with a more conclusive, agreed schedule.
And agreed. I think we should look at this a little harder in the future. We all know it's going to be the every other date, and we'll commit to the city clerk that we'll do a better job of critiquing this before the council meeting to streamline our actions up here.
Excellent.
With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the council schedule for 2025 that we have just outlined.
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by council member Albrecht, seconded by council member Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. So our next item is outside agency and council liaison appointments. This one is somewhat tied to the next one. There is a little report on this and an explanation to go with it. I'm going to ask our city clerk, Lisa Pope, to present the report.
For item number twelve, I can defer to the council to make its selections for the outside agency and liaison appointments.
So for outside agency and liaison appointments, what is currently in our agenda is this. For the Agour Hills Calabasas Community Center Joint Powers Authority are Bazagian and Kraut. For the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority is Bazagian with Albrecht as the alternate. For the Clean Power Alliance is Albrecht with Shapiro as the alternate. For the Headwaters Corner Interpretive Center Board of Directors is Kraut and Albrecht. For the Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments is Weintraub with Shapiro as the alternate. For the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee is the mayor or his designee. For the Los Angeles County West Vector and Vector Born Disease Control District is council member Bazagian. For the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Advisory Board is Kraut. And just to correct what's in our agenda, the Santa Monica Mountains Advisory Board does not have a provision for cities to designate an alternate. So although council member Albrecht is interested and might even be attending, we can't have an alternate for this position. And then for the Valley Economic Alliance, council member Shapiro with council member Albrecht as the alternate. Are there any council questions or comments regarding the outside agency appointments?
Yes. I would say, just to let everyone know, as of January thirtieth, the Community Center Board will not exist. Technically, probably doesn't exist right now. So if we just took that off, we would just remain, and it would expire next week.
And I think either way, it's the same two people being appointed to it, so we can just leave it on the agenda as is. But acknowledge, the Agour Hills Calabasas Community Center Joint Powers Authority Board may have already been dissolved and will be formally dissolved and recognized as being dissolved within the month. Does that state your position?
Yes, the other question I had was on the Headwaters Corner. Is that still functional and active?
The Headwaters Corner Interpretive Center Board of Directors has five members, two of which are appointed from the city council. Those two are Kraut and Albrecht. Although we have not had a meeting in quite a while, that board does still exist, and we are waiting further action.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the outside agency appointments?
Mayor, if I could just clarify, this is the current appointments, not proposed suggestions for 2025.
Was I reading the wrong list?
No.
Oh, okay.
It says 2024.
Right. This is as it currently exists. So if you wanted to make any changes.
I think we should make Peter the permanent city selection committee.
And make him go.
I did attend the last one and successfully voted with a quorum.
Wow.
It was held virtually because of the fires.
That was during COVID. It was always perfect attendance.
Any other changes? Okay, hearing none, would like to entertain a motion to approve the outside agency appointments.
So moved.
Second.
That's been moved by Shapiro and seconded by Weintraub. Can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. And now for the standing and temporary advisory ad hoc committees. There is an item that we do have to discuss, which is the definition of committees and ad hoc committees and Brown Acts and all sorts of stuff like that.
Mayor.
What about liaisons?
Before we get into that, can we do the liaisons down at the bottom of the?
Gotcha.
Sorry.
All right, so the council liaisons. For the Chamber of Commerce, we have council member Albrecht and Bazagian. For Cal Cities, formerly the League of California Cities, we have Kraut with Bazagian as the alternate. For California Contract Cities Association, we have Albrecht with Bazagian as the alternate. For the Los Virginas Unified School District Parent Faculty Club Association Liaisons, there's no names in the agenda, but I believe we had Shapiro and Weintraub were serving there last year.
Yes.
And then for the Valley Industry Commerce Association, we have Shapiro with Kraut as the alternate. Oh, we did flip those. So there was a suggested change to switch VICA to Kraut as the designee and Shapiro as the alternate. Were there any other changes? Yes.
Thank you. Valley Economic Alliance is missing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the outside agencies.
Mayor, I have your list of recommendations that weren't included in the report.
Yeah, I'm noticing that now. Would you share those?
Sure. On my phone if I can read this. Contract Cities remains the same. Clean Power Alliance, you suggested Albrecht and Bazagian as the alternate?
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think so.
I thought we just approved that.
You did, but I'm going back to what he had sent as his recommendations.
We've just approved the outside agencies already at this point. I don't think we want to backtrack on that. Do we?
No, I didn't. I don't.
I don't recall that markup either.
I didn't ask for that.
We'll move on?
I don't know how that got there.
And I'm sorry, for members of the public that are listening in, I was anticipating a little bit more of a report on this item. Just to clarify, and this has been shared with the council members in correspondence, but I don't believe the members of the public have been privy to this conversation, we have, we're trying to separate appointments which serve on a board, which have a voting representation, which serve the city, which serve another organization on behalf of the city, versus a liaison which is not truly a board or a formal present, you know, a voting body, if you will. And then we're separately going to be looking at our ad hoc committees. And we're doing so because in the definition of committees and stuff, we'll get to in the next presentation, they have to serve a definite purpose for a finite amount of time. They have to follow the Brown Act in some situations, noticing the agendas of the meetings and such. So this is all a process to clean that up. And again, I'm sorry, I was really anticipating a little bit more of a presentation on this. We have an excellent memo from our city clerk that explained all of this, but for those of you that are listening in at home wondering what we're doing tonight. So back to the liaison position then. Any other changes or recommendations? So we've switched on VICA, Kraut as the appointee, and Shapiro as the alternate. Other than that, it's as printed in the agenda.
And Shapiro and Weintraub.
With the addition of, as not printed in the agenda, is Weintraub and Shapiro as the liaisons to the LVUSD PFCs.
PFCs and PFAs, yes.
Correct.
And I think it was just schools also, because we did viewpoint, it was broader than just LVUSD. I thought so.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was one of our questions that we weren't certain if, whether this group was actually meeting with viewpoint or other schools on a regular basis, so we can include that as the liaisons to schools.
Do they have a parent faculty club at those schools?
Yes.
Yeah.
They do, okay.
I mean, different word, different.
Different words for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. With those clarifications, all those in favor?
Aye.
What's that? Oh, I need a motion, don't I?
So moved.
Moved by council member Weintraub, seconded by council member Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the city council standing and temporary advisory ad hoc committees. Our city clerk, Lisa Pope, will present.
Thank you. So the city council currently has several task forces, including budget, commission, procedure, and council protocols, economic development, homeless, mayor's youth council, public safety, emergency preparedness, open space annexations, recreation, youth, senior services, school site, sustainability, technology, and infrastructure. The government code clearly defines standing committees as having continuing subject matter jurisdiction or a fixed meeting schedule, even if less than a quorum of the body is on that committee. Standing committees require agendas and are open to the public. Additionally, there are temporary advisory committees, or sometimes I refer to them as ad hoc committees, so I may go back and forth. They're made up of less than a quorum and serve a limited or single purpose. They're not perpetual and not subject to the Brown Act. Staff recommends reviewing the existing task forces and determining if there is a continued need. Of those considered to be necessary, the council should decide if they are considered ongoing, annual subject matter, such as the budget, and those should be transitioned into standing committees. If an existing task force has a specific finite purpose, the council could create a temporary advisory committee with a defined task, which, when completed, would, the committee would be terminated. Staff requests council discussion on the potential changes to task force, and the modified list, along with appointments, would be brought back for final action on February twelfth.
Okay, so the list in front of us this evening, we currently have the following. We have budget, commission, procedures, council protocols, economic development, homeless, mayor's youth council, public safety, emergency preparedness, open space annexations, recreation, youth, senior services, school site, sustainability, and technology and infrastructure. And the proposal. Let me get my notes up here.
So Mayor, while you're looking for that, if you don't mind if I jump in, well, as we've looked at this as staff and in consultation with the city attorney, we see very few of these existing task forces that would translate or carry over into standing committees. There could be some exceptions, but for example, right now, what we see is very, as a very clear committee, a standing committee would be the budget standing committee. All of these others could be broken down into ad hoc committees, not necessarily at this meeting, but it could be tied with the goal setting or strategic planning that we do going forward, but very specific in nature. And we don't have to make that decision to. And we don't have to make that decision tonight, but we do want to discuss with the council if there's any others besides the budget task force that would, are truly standing committees. And if not, if there's a wish by the council to look at ad hoc community, ad hoc committee meetings or ad hoc meetings at a future date, not necessarily taking the time tonight to do that.
I have a question. Can you explain, for instance, if we want to have a meeting, if we want to have a public safety meeting that just takes place, I mean, just using that as an example, what is the, what should that be called in nature for that meeting to be able to take place with staff to discuss an issue?
Great question. So if this is a standing committee, it would require an agenda, posting that agenda in minutes.
So what, if we don't want that, what would ad hoc?
If we wanted us to do an ad hoc, so for example, public safety, that could be broken down into several components. So for example, we've heard from the community tonight, we've talked with others, that firewise is a priority of the community. There could be an ad hoc committee, ad hoc public safety committee focused on firewise communities. And that is the purpose and the focus of that, that committee. And that would be, the goal would be to move as many of our HOAs and neighborhood associations into firewise communities with a kind of an end date, you know, we're going to look at this for a one year or a two-year process. But we wouldn't have to agendize that. You can meet with staff.
Right.
We could schedule that.
So I would like to make a request to move like public safety to ad hoc, economic development, you know, that could be ad hoc. I mean, I think most of these could be ad hoc.
And I think with that, we should probably even define it further down, instead of just saying public safety or economic development. So for example, we've heard from the council, and we haven't had this discussion completely, but we've heard from the council that there's an interest in preparing for the Olympics. That could be an economic development ad hoc committee to prepare for the Olympics. You know, instead of just saying economic development.
I guess my question is, until we establish these, I don't want progress to, I don't want meetings to not be able to happen, so that's why I wanted to not...
And Pam, do you want to chime in on that? Because again, the difficulty in creating just an ad hoc committee, or I'm sorry, an ad hoc committee on economic development, it's the vagueness of that, correct, that is?
Correct. So if you do want to have an ad hoc committee, like Kendon said, it does have to be for a specific purpose with a potential end date in sight. If you do want to, before you create an ad hoc committee on, let's say, the Olympics, but you do want it to, you do want to have the meetings move forward in preparation for that, and we're not ready to establish an ad hoc committee with a specific purpose. Economic development, it would end up being just a standing committee that you would regularly agendize with the Brown Act and the noticing requirements. So you can go ahead and do that, but once you establish the ad hoc, then we would be able to take away the noticing and the Brown Act requirements for that.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So for efficiency purposes, if members of the public reach out to me on an issue, and I want to bring, it doesn't need to be elevated to the mayor, it's just like focused on a specific issue, and I wanted to meet with staff on it and another council member, what's the best path forward to do that?
I suppose it would be...
Just a meeting?
It would just be a meeting.
Fine.
Yeah, that would be very doable. So we could set those up quickly, just as a meeting.
Fine.
And then the decision would be made at that meeting is, does this rise to the nature of it being an ad hoc committee that would then come to the council and be commissioned or ratified as an ad hoc committee?
So then, you can, so I just want to make sure meetings can still take place with staff to address certain issues?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Okay, to that end, Alicia, to that end, you're using, let's use economic development and LA 28 as an example. So economic development is an ongoing conversation. It's not something, we've got an idea, let's meet. We develop ideas, we massage them, we work over them. So that would be something, what confuses me a little bit, because it's perpetuity. You have an area that is going to be constant, constantly having attention on many different levels. Then we have an offshoot of that, which is something, an event happening, which might be temporary in nature, like the Olympics. So I'm not sure what we're trying to solve with some of them.
Let me see.
Are we solving the, to make it easier without the agenda and the Brown Act? Or are we confusing it more, because now we're going to have an offshoot that's not in that condition, but one that is?
So to try to simplify it again, using the word economic development isn't a defined subject matter. We know, for example, with the budget, what that exactly is every single year, every single meeting. We know that, that, the budget committee will review the numbers this year, the next year, revenues, expenses, and so it's a defined purpose. Whereas we, when we say economic development, what's happened in the past was we've talked about new, new businesses coming into town. We've talked about an economic development plan. We've talked about, there's a lot of different subject matters that have come under that, but it is not a defined and an ongoing process.
So let's fast forward then. What does economic development, sustainability, things like this have? What is their future?
Of those committees?
What would you see the future look like?
So that's where we would come back and create specific ad hoc committees. So for example, sustainability, that could be an ad hoc committee on the climate action plan. That could be completely focused. There's a beginning, a defined purpose, and an end.
The problem with that is sometimes these committees are looking at two or three items, not just one. So do we table all the other ones?
You wouldn't be able to do, yeah.
Right. So it doesn't get any momentum, except on that one. So LA 28 hasn't happened till way, you know, years, a couple of years from now. There's other issues that we need to talk about. We're zoning, we discussed.
Or couldn't we keep it, we could notice the meeting?
Correct. Well, the way it's structured now is you, you've established these quote unquote task force. All of these task forces that have been created by the council with two council members as part of the task force of the committee, at the present, require noticing requirements and Brown Act requirements, inviting the public to be able to attend all of that, the whole shebang. We can continue to move forward with each of these individual task forces. We would just have to notice them and allow the public to attend and participate under the Brown Act. If you want to streamline the effort on any of these, or specifically deal with it on a subject matter basis, one issue or two issues or three issues, you can do that and create an ad hoc committee instead. You can continue to keep these and meet on an as-needed basis, subject to the Brown Act requirements, and/or establish an ad hoc committee, for example, the LA 28. It is going to be three years from now, and that would not be subject to the Brown Act requirements if you have that single purpose of promoting economic development for the purpose of LA 28 in inviting vendors or, you know, participants involved. You can include as part of that LA 28, another specific goal for economic development. It doesn't have to be specifically a single item issue, but it does have to be specific items that are concrete and have an end date in sight.
Question to you. So how do you create an ad hoc committee? Do you decide suddenly we need to talk about this and that?
Yeah, the council would create it. You would then, just like the task force, get two members of the council to be part of it, and then you could have staff meet with those two council members, and you wouldn't have to follow all of the Brown Act requirements that are involved.
So if I hear you right, does it have to be created through a vote of council?
Correct.
Okay.
It's almost like a hybrid. I was trying to do the easy way, as Alicia mentioned, and as you've recommended to do ad hoc, but in order to do ad hoc committees, we eventually have to come back to council to get it approved, and then move forward with whatever that task is. Some of these, like homelessness task force, which was created for broad purpose, and the task force would then come back with ideas for council, or suggestions, or solve issues with staff, are things that are important. Emergency preparedness, mayor's youth council, I think should, and budget should both be, and I think they are currently, at least mayor's youth council, agendized and public availability. It's almost like these task force, to me, seem to be okay now, but maybe we could start with them and then come back with ad hoc recommendations for some of these within, whether it's LA 28, whether it's getting rid of one of these and changing it, but some of it, sustainability, definitely was a broader range, because as council, we gave a certain direction on it, but yet there are items that came up with the Environmental Commission that Ed and I would meet with, with Curtis and staff, which would not fall within that ad hoc purpose at all.
So councilman, if I could just go down the list, I think, just looking at some of these existing committees, budget could be, remain as standing committee. Protocols and procedures, that could be really an ad hoc. There's no actions that are required, any... I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
No, I would just recommend, we have completed the task of council protocols.
So it'd be...
That would become an ad hoc committee for the commission procedures.
Correct.
Which would have a finite end, once we've established those procedures. And then the ad hoc committee would be disbanded.
Yeah. The public safety, emergency preparedness, that could remain as a standing committee, again, but it would just be, follow the Brown Act rules. The open space annexation task force, that really could transition to an ad hoc committee, because it's focused really on the initiative for 2026. Again, a defined purpose, a finite time. School site task force, that has already been taken care of through our liaison appointments. Council member Weintraub, council member Shapiro have been appointed as liaison, so we don't need a separate task force. You're already filling that position in your liaison appointments.
Sorry, just a question, because something just came to my mind. So as, so if people as a liaison are, receive outreach from the community, and then we need to set up a meeting as the liaisons to meet with staff, what is that?
That's a meeting with the liaisons.
Fine.
That doesn't require a Brown Act.
There's, oh, right. Okay, so then that would work for economic development too? Because when Ed and I are working on some things with economic development, we're the, we're liaison, are we liaisons?
That would be a standing committee, yeah.
I need to go back to economic development later.
If I can finish that.
I was waiting for you to come up with an answer.
No, because that one's so tricky. We have these amazing agendas. Scott knows, we get so much done in that meeting. How can we keep that? There's so much going there.
You'd keep it as a standing committee.
If I can just jump in here, first of all, as a liaison, I think the key is it's somebody else's meeting. So that's the meeting of the PFA or the PFC that you're attending.
Right.
So because it's their meeting, we can call that a liaison. It doesn't mean that you can't, you know, take it back to staff and take care of business. When it comes to some of these others, like for example, economic development, our task here tonight is to give direction to our city staff to bring back these appointments on February 12. So if we're not 100% sure, we can give some general direction and maybe clarify it with the city clerk before the February 12th agenda comes out, but I think we're on the right track with what you're saying. The public safety, emergency preparedness can stay as a standing committee, notice the public and follow the Brown Act. Open space annexations task force...
Can I ask you?
Sure.
I guess, question for a few people. What if it, sometimes information comes to the current task force that's confidential, that hasn't been shared with, it's, we're vetting ideas that have come to us, you know, it's not closed session, but it's, it's private matters that aren't ready to be vetted with the community yet. How does that work if it's a public meeting?
If it's a public meeting and there's confidential information, obviously you would want to withhold that. There could be closed sessions for a standing committee, but they would still have to be within the defined qualifications, whether or not they meet the ability to be closed session items. Otherwise, you would just meet individually with staff.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be a meeting at all. It would just be an individual meeting without the other committees, members.
I'm going to chime in. Can that individual meeting be with two council members?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a Brown Act violation if it's just two members, but if there are already standing committee procedures that's established, that could violate the Brown Act. So this is where it gets gray and tricky. So it really depends on what you do tonight and the information that you receive. And that's why it's best to either call it a standing committee or just individually talk to staff about it. And don't tell me, because I will say...
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm so confused. Like, I'm using economic development as an example. How can that, that's not a meeting that would take place in the public. It's like a brainstorming session. We're running ideas back and forth. It, that's just, that wouldn't be a, we wouldn't be able to get our work done the way we're doing it. So I'm trying to understand how we're going to continue moving forward being effective leaders with not able to have meetings.
Yeah, for, let's say, you know, you've got an idea, or somebody comes forward to you with a potential development. That would be an individual meeting with staff.
We don't, it's not about developments. We're, we're not talking about developments in our meetings.
Brainstorming, I think, is the best way of putting it. So it doesn't, it flows, sometimes you can, it's debate issues.
Yeah.
Is this important enough to just, to look into, have staff spend time with it? We want to be time efficient, and we can't tackle everything, so we kind of decide on, this is really more important to the city right now. And some of these issues that might be private, we won't want to expose them, because maybe we won't go forward with it, and we don't want to alarm anybody or concern, not that it's, I mean, council's going to make all the decisions. We're not making decisions, we're just looking into it and presenting ideas to the council. We're not voting on any matters that will go forward.
That's why I think it's important to not have a standing committee on economic development. If that's the case, I would keep it informal and have your meetings with the city manager, bounce ideas off of staff. If you do want to have two members deal specifically with economic development, you've in essence created a standing committee, which would then be subject to the Brown Act. So anytime you want to have ideas at a very high level, you know, let's kind of think about creating an economic development corridor, or ways to attract new business. That would in essence, with the two that have kind of been part of the task force, it would require a meeting. Most cities don't necessarily have that. They would go to the council, or they would go to the city manager, have those individual meetings.
Can you look at a sample agenda, so maybe, because I don't think, we might not be articulating properly the ideas that are being discussed there, but I don't want to lose that. There's a lot of good things that come out of that meeting, and...
Absolutely. I can certainly talk to staff and figure out how to best deal with this moving forward.
Our meeting contains three people primarily. Community development, the director of community development, and Alicia and myself. And it's just a brainstorming session, and then we'll get an idea, a couple of ideas. We've already got a kind of a goal, a few goals. Some good things have come out of it already.
And then it comes to council.
Then we're going to run with it, but we don't want to have him run and use his staff and spend time for not a good purpose.
I feel like we're going backwards with all of this.
Yes, and we understand the frustration with this. This is new to us as a city. And so we're grappling with this just as much as you are of how this is changing really the dynamics of how we operate in some ways. And again, we can keep most of these as standing committees and test that out, but we do lose, we are losing some of that flexibility, even for example, if we were to meet as a standing committee for the public safety and emergency preparedness on a Thursday and said, hey, we didn't finish, we need to meet again on Monday, we now are technically adjourning the meeting, right, and having to continue to, to post that to the public to continue your participation.
I'm worried that as council, we're not going to have the ability to meet with staff. That's what I... That's what I want to make sure is not happening with this.
And council members, individual, council members can always meet with staff and run with ideas. We can have those discussions. It's just when two or more, that's when it becomes a committee.
So essentially, if you were using economic development as an example, and we have two or three ideas that we're working on, we would have to have an ad hoc committee for each one of those ideas.
Correct.
If we're doing goal setting.
And the same two people could be on those three ad hoc committees, and you can meet at once to discuss those, but they would be specific to those items.
And Councilman Shapiro just mentioned something that's very important. So before we do make those, before we do make those, we have to have council approval.
Correct.
See, you can't, no new, no new fresh ideas are able to happen. Because you can't respond immediately or effectively.
Typically speaking, in every other city, it would be an individual meeting with a council member and a staff member. It doesn't typically happen in twos. Once you have that, like I said, with this task force created, you're in essence creating a standing committee. A lot of, and you're a very active council, and that's commendable. A lot of other cities just don't have as active of a council with respect to items like economic development. Or they'll task it with, you know, a staff member to lead the charge, and it'll only be one council member that will be involved with the process instead of two.
It's not our nature.
This is very different for us.
No, but I also just feel that we're losing the ability to be responsive, and that's really frustrating to me.
Yes, I understand the frustration.
Yeah, these meetings are dynamic, so they move and flow, and it's not a straight line type meeting. Well, you know what we need? When we do come up with what this, what we're doing, we need to have a written policy so we can follow it appropriately. And we'll have to have an agenda item more frequently that we'll have to create an ad hoc committee for a certain purpose.
Yeah. Specifically with the ad hoc and the concerns that you've raised with economic development, I will get with staff, look at it more and see what we can do to enable you to continue doing what you can. But if it, if it does run afoul with what the state law requires, then.
And public safety, and public safety too, which needs to come up with ad hoc committees?
Or have it be a standing committee.
Right, I'd rather, you, we want to have flexibility to be able to communicate. Not Brown Act violations, but to be able to be responsive. And sometimes issues come up, and you want to get a meeting and be responsive.
I think staff can look at what's been discussed at prior task force meetings and figure out a way to assist you in determining what the ad hoc specific task would be. We'll look at that and come back with suggestions.
Okay, last question for me. So let's say two council members talk about things that we've talked in the past, and we want to get some answers. We don't necessarily want to make it a standing committee. And we take those, one of us take that idea, I'm trying to bypass the system a little bit, and take that idea to a director of a department.
You would ask the city manager.
Yeah, so, again, two members, we have the practice. We do two-two ones frequently in different issues with the council. And so under that scenario, the two council members are at a meeting, they have a great idea and conversation with a resident, a constituent. Then it would be, okay, hey, Kenan, we have this idea. We want to talk to, fill in the blank for the department. And then I would have Scott, myself, or Michael attend with that director to brainstorm on that idea. From that meeting, then probably the next action would be to say, okay, what would we need to do to move this forward? Let's put this on the agenda item. And that would be, again, under future agendas or goals. It's really cyclical in this, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, in a sense, it's okay, it's just a slow, it's the, it's not the express train.
No. Thank our state legislators who don't adhere to the Brown Act and don't have to.
So we'll just have a lot more, a lot more meetings, less, the length will be probably a little less. We'll work it out, we'll have to work it out.
Okay, so before we get back to the list again, I just want to comment that, you know, we have a new city clerk here. She came to us with lots and lots of experience from other cities. And we're being the benefit of that tonight. And tonight's a little awkward and a little uncomfortable for us, but we got to acknowledge that, that what she's brought to us is an important subject matter. We also have a new city attorney tonight, who's only been with us for a few months now. And she's giving us her counsel, and we are unfortunately tied to the Brown Act. And the Brown Act says that we have to conduct business in public. We have to be accessible to the public, we have to be agendized, we have to be noticed. And it's really uncomfortable for all of us. I don't know that we're going to get all of these answered tonight, but I'd like to get an answer to as many as possible. And we can follow up with our city clerk afterwards for the ones that we don't cover. But getting back to the list again, open space annexation task force is, we can rename that an ad hoc committee to address the $5 million grant. Is that our first order of business?
Well, why would we, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not understanding. Why would you do that as opposed to just have that under, under?
Our two, our two choices is keep the committee as a standing committee, and we can only conduct meetings with an agenda, notice to the public, open to the public, or make it an ad hoc committee with a finite term and a finite task, and then we can conduct business with just two council members and staff until the goal is completed.
So what happens when there's a parcel of open space available for potential purchase? We can't meet?
Then we would, at this city council meeting, we would assign an ad hoc committee to address parcel number X, and they can go meet.
I would rather not do that because there's timeliness issues on some of those. There's time limits, and you're going, you won't have enough time. You'll miss an opportunity to buy a piece of property.
That's what I was saying.
With that one, council member, or mayor pro tem, we'd really, in the end, we'd have to bring that back to the council for full approval in closed session. And so we would just agendize that under a closed session, property acquisition. And usually that's what the ad hoc committee is doing, is there's a property, it's for sale, or it wants, you know, the property owner wants to donate it, the ad hoc committee advises that it is a good property or not, and then we come to the council in closed session.
Wow.
So we would just have to expedite that.
There's no purpose for the committee then, is what you're saying?
Not for that purpose, but for example, the open space initiative for 2026, and then also finalizing the $5 million grant from, to the conservancy and the property report, the inventory. Those are two specific tasks that could fall under that.
So, okay, so then you would have two ad hoc committees, one for the open space ad hoc committee for the $5 million allocation, open space ad hoc committee for the initiative?
You could do it that way, correct? And it could be the same individuals from the council.
Okay. Because we do need to start working on that too.
Yeah.
So both of those? But anything else, just it's done doing work on other items?
Question on the $5 million, you keep saying five. Is it limited to five? There's, I know there's a potentiality at least that was discussed about additional funds as well? The seven?
So right now, we have five allocated.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what has been allocated to the conservancy. There is hopes for, yeah, other funding in the future, but right now we do have five allocated.
Anything else would be another ad hoc committee for that purpose then, right?
To secure additional funds?
Yes.
That would likely go through a lobbyist or a grant writers where we would head with that one.
Thank you.
Okay, next would be the school site task force. We would disband because we have created the school site liaisons, the liaisons to the PFCs. I would suggest with councilmember Weintraub's concurrence that the homeless task force has completed its goal. I don't know that we have another item on the table.
But I think that's such an important issue to keep when something comes up, that we should be able to have that. I think we should keep that.
So leave it as a standing committee, and we would agendize and notice our meetings?
Or I guess we can just meet? I don't know. I, I'm very, I know we're bound by this, but I'm really disappointed because I feel that it's really taking away our ability to make good policies. Like, to help, there has to be another way to be able to get work done.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, our city attorney, there is nothing that stops two council members from, from meeting, from having a cup of coffee, from discussing ideas, as long as it's only two? They just don't, they aren't empowered by this body to take action. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so if two council members get together and talk about something and have an idea and want to move it forward, they simply, at this meeting, ask for a future agenda item, make a motion, make a second, it's on the agenda. If it's something that is, doesn't need policy, doesn't need budget, is already set up within our city, then those two council members could then say to staff, hey, we got an issue here, take a look into it. I would think. It just can't be empowered by this body to do, to take action.
I guess we'll have lunch and talk homeless. I don't know what to say, I mean.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of the items that are listed here were at one point created by the, the task force was created by the council.
Correct.
That's, that was the initiation of the standing committee. Unfortunately, that's where it started.
So we're essentially taking the name task force away, and we're replacing it if it's going to be a task force, in a sense, was a task force, now it's going to be a standing committee.
Right, right. You could have called it whatever you want, but the attorney general has made the point that it's the substance over the form. In essence, if this is what it has been performing as, it's, it.
Okay, I'm going somewhere with this. So I can white out task force on this sheet.
Doesn't matter what you call it.
But can two council members and the department head meet to talk?
You can always meet to, you can always meet to talk, two council members and someone on staff to talk about whatever is within the purview of the city. That is always allowed.
So that'll satisfy the brainstorming?
Yeah.
The follow.
It just runs, it just runs a little bit murky when it's the same two talking about a topic that was created by the council under one of these lists.
It wasn't created by the council though. The topic was created by the two and the department head.
If that's, if that's the case, it's just.
Yeah, we're just.
Go ahead and talk.
It's brainstorming.
Correct.
Essentially, that's where the whole thing comes from, and then it's going to come here in the format of an agenda item.
That's my follow-up question. The magic meeting that takes place, we'll use it that way for, an idea comes out of it, maybe a great idea, goes to city manager, comes back for agenda, goes to the list. It's going to take a long time, most likely to even get to council. So that was what, referring to councilmember Weintraub, what she talked about, about the slowing of the process. This, it may end a lot of ideas before they're even, before council, if that makes sense.
And if I could, if I could address that council member, what we're dealing with is a couple of different items at the same time. So for example, our next item, if we get to it tonight, is either goal setting or strategic planning. What happens in most cities is the council defines very clear goals of what they need to happen or strategic plan. And then based on those goals or that strategic planning, ad hoc or standing committees are created to address those goals or that strategic plan. And so then you have a very clear direction from your peers, from your council, and from your community of what those priorities are. And so that becomes the focus of those goals, that strategic plan or whatever it is, with either standing committees or ad hoc committees to address those goals. Now, we all know that at times there's going to be new things that come up. You're going to attend a meeting, whether it's a contract cities or a SCAG, and something will come up and that will require immediate attention. You have the luxury of talking with one of your peers, one of your council members, with staff, with us together. You could not then do a serial meeting, as we've talked about, but you could, and then, then from there, we'd say, okay, where does this elevate? We already have our set goals for the year, or we already have a strategic plan for the next five years. Does this rise to the level that it bumps something from that list? Or does it, it would come back to the council for that discussion. So there's a lot of moving parts with this, and I think, you know, again, we're looking these at, as trying to say, these are standing committees or ad hoc committees, but we really haven't talked about overall what's our vision and what we're trying to accomplish. And I think that's the missing component of this.
And, and again, I don't want to mix agenda items here. Going back to our list again, we have, we have two choices according to the Brown Act. And we can debate the Brown Act all night long. We have advice from our city attorney, and unless a council member wants to suggest that we discard her advice, what I believe our task here is, is to choose which ones of these will become standing committees, which ones will become ad hoc committees with a fixed purpose. The standing committees will be noticed and agendized, and we can disband others. And at some point in the future, we can bring them back.
Might I recommend budget and Mayor's Youth Council be standing committees to start the process?
I would agree, and I think we start it from the top. Budget should be a standing committee. The commission procedures is done, the council protocols is an ad hoc committee. Economic development, we can come back to. Public safety, we can come back to. The open space is going to become two ad hoc committees. The school site task force has become a liaison to the PFCs. Again, my suggestion is the homeless task force completed its mission when we put in services and a no camping ordinance, and our city staff and our homeless outreach coordinator take care of the day-to-day occurrences of homeless individuals in our community. We may at some point be tasked with another, you know, ordeal and some goal to accomplish, but at this point in time, I'm not aware of one. And if it's in order of solving something that shows up quickly, we certainly don't want that to go to a standing committee. We want that just to be referred to staff and dealt with. So my suggestion is we close the homeless task force.
Were we going over the composition of these committees?
We're going to come back to that on February 12th. This is going to have to be rewritten and brought back to us. I'm just hoping to get some clearer direction to our city clerk before we close this item. I think each one of you and I have had a conversation about committees that you wanted to stay on and serve on, and we're, this in front of us reflects the 2024 committees. They don't reflect what we had discussed, so we'll get that corrected before the February 12th agenda. Moving on, technology and infrastructure task force. Any suggestion on what to do with that? Is there any open item that you're working on?
I'm laughing just because my cell phone wouldn't connect to Alicia's during the fire, so. Yes, there are issues, but how to best handle that is the question.
We can maybe do that under public safety ad hoc, since some, since there's some crossover.
Sure.
Yeah.
With cell service, with wireless, with broadband.
Okay, so shall we call that an ad hoc committee on exploring lessons learned from the Palisades Fire? It has to have a defined purpose.
Or is it?
Getting better cell service in the city.
Self-service reliability ad hoc committee that you look into examining the current service?
Yeah, and put like, however you want to put like spectrum and AT&amp;T.
Also, along with SCE and note.
We'll call it an ad hoc committee on communication services.
Yes, perfect.
Is that broad enough and defined enough?
But.
What about SCE's notices? Would that fall under that, or would that have to be an ad hoc emergency preparedness task?
We might be discussing that at the council level first. So let's do that first.
Do you want us to come up with a list of ad hoc committees?
No.
I don't know if we'll be able to get through all that tonight.
I'm sorry, where are we right now?
Sustainability, okay.
As a ad hoc or a regular meeting, notice, oh. Okay, then we couldn't meet with, ad hoc, what purpose? You can only get one purpose.
And if it's standing, it's going to be noticed and agendized.
Correct.
The Mayor's Youth Council is a standing committee, noticed and agendized?
Can I correct that one, Mayor? That, that is created by. That is created by resolution. And we already, in our last item, appointed who the designees are to that. That shouldn't be on this list as a standing committee. That is created by the resolution and its frequency of meetings and so forth. And so we can remove that one.
So we put that, we put that one on the liaison list.
Correct.
We did?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one, the mayor's youth council?
Correct.
I didn't, maybe I missed it. Where, where was it? I didn't see it.
We're suggesting putting that on the liaison list.
Well, then we need to designate people on it.
Sorry.
I believe the
We're designating the mayor and the mayor pro tem as liaisons to the mayor's youth council.
Do we need to vote on that, too? We voted on everything else?
The resolution actually says that the mayor is the liaison, and the mayor selects who they would like to serve with them. And I think that's already been done.
Okay. So this shouldn't be on here at all, not on this list.
That's correct. Our agenda has reprint of the 24 council liaison appointments. When we come back with this on February 12th, we'll have the 2025 appointments. And the last one then would be Recreation Youth and Senior Services Task Force. Is there a suggestion as to whether that's a standing committee to be noticed and agendized? Or if you have a particular purpose with an end date that you want to pursue as an ad hoc committee?
I think it was, the agenda's fantastic, so we could make it a standing one. Sorry?
We could have an ad hoc meeting on community programming.
Whatever everyone likes, how's that?
Then we can just meet.
Part of the creation, so with that one, if you remember, that one was really created last year to create a void. The council felt there wasn't enough communication and information coming with all of the movement of the parks, the community center, the Wild Walnut. And so it really became an avenue to update council members and provide that feedback to the council members. I don't know if that one exists anymore, because we already have a pre that should be recommending programming to, to the council.
They're great meetings, by the way.
Well, we didn't really discuss it, but some of these, I'm not sure we, do we still need all of these committees and task forces? So I guess we get rid of that.
Just tell Erica she did a great job.
Yeah, she, I mean, she really liked meeting with you, too, is because of the, again, the energy. It's similar with the economic development. It's that, there's a certain synergy that happens in those conversations, those free conversations. We're going to have to just figure out a new way to come about that.
What's going to happen now when, when staff wants to bounce off, when we would previously have our task force meetings, if staff wanted to bounce something off to council members before it came to council, what is that now, just like the mayor and mayor pro tem?
It would be more of a two-two-one meetings or one-one-one.
Wow.
Yeah.
This is bad governance, in my opinion. This is literally slowing down progress and making us very inefficient. I mean, we're never going to get, I'm saying this here, our productivity this year, not because of you, Peter, but it's just going to slow down tremendously. I'm very disappointed. I just want that on the record.
It's single-minded.
Yeah, it's really disappointing. Really disappointing.
Baby steps, basically. We've got economic development. That's the only one that we have a name so far.
Let's come up with some ad hocks.
We need an ad hoc committee to overturn the Brown Act.
I'm in, I'm in. This is ridiculous.
Okay, ad hoc?
Yeah.
Ad hoc on that.
You want, we have to come up with something.
Economic development will become an ad hoc committee. Lisa, I know we've rambled quite a bit here. What I'd like to ask is take the notes as best you can. I think the best direction at this point is for us council members to let this simmer. We can reach out to Lisa to help craft the names of these ad hoc committees and be specific in our purpose for the ones that we're going that direction for. And we're going to have to discuss this again when it comes back on February 12th. This is not a consent item. So let's, let's all put our thoughts together. Don't meet as committees about it, but let's think about it, talk to somebody about it. And we will finalize this on February 12th. If that sounds like a good plan, if there's no other suggestions?
Yeah, just one, one note for Lisa. Lisa, economic development's going to be, we got to name it, it's going to be LA 28. That's a lot to cover right there.
That's one.
Okay.
And let's talk to maybe someone, I don't know if Ed and I can do it. We can talk to Michael, and he can help us brainstorm some of the ad hoc. Because we can have like five of them.
I'm going to have no meetings, I like this.
Yeah, no, Ed and I are committed to this.
I got a lot of free time.
Okay. If we are done with item number 13 then? Do we have enough direction? I've, I asked for a break at, if anybody wanted a break at 8:30, I got to know. I think several people have been interested in a break since then. We have one item left.
Well, if it's going to be an hour, then I don't, I don't want a break. So, you know, how long is this one going to be? Because we had a very short estimate for the last two, and it was wrong.
Probably an hour and a half.
How long is this?
It's probably closer to an hour.
Kind of vague.
Hey, stop, Ron.
It could be an hour.
This is not goal, it's not goal setting or strategic planning. It's really direction for a future goal-setting strategic plan. So we can make this as short as you want.
But you see how short we are picking committees.
Are we going through each one of these pages?
No.
No.
I can go fast.
Do we, do we want to table this for another night?
Yes.
That's up to the council.
I'm happy to do that.
We're happy to do that.
Last I saw it, didn't look like our agendas are too backed up?
No, we can move things around.
Okay. And we do want to return to our closed session meeting?
That's correct.
So why don't I entertain a motion to table number 14 till the next council meeting?
So moved.
That was moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. Did I get the language correct tabled, or is it continued? Tabled, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's five zero, passes. Oral reports, any council members have anything to report?
Yes, I received a request attached to my bill, my very high electric bill, for a rate increase for Southern California Edison. Before that hearing from the Public Utilities Commission, I'd like that to be agendized in front of the council for potential action.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second.
So moved by Councilmember Visagian, seconded by Weintraub? So that was a request for a future agenda item. Any other council reports?
No task force meeting for us.
I did, I alluded to this before, but January 30th is technically the last meeting of the Gorillas Calabasas Community Center, JPA Board. And I have pieces of the community center, if anyone's interested.
Anybody else? Okay. City manager, anything to report?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. At this time then, we were going to adjourn into closed session after a five minute, we're going to recess into closed session after a five-minute break.